Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm gonna give everybody an opportunity to take whatever available seats we have in the chambers here tonight. If there's an available seat, I think we have a few out there. If there's some people that need to sit down or like to sit down, I'll allow you time to do that. And those of you in the atrium, if you like, you can come in here. We can make room if you'd like to come into the chambers. You can stand over here by Mr. Harbuck, that nice fellow there to your left, my left.
Your right.
Or even, yeah. All right, so I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. It's been quite a long time since we've seen standing room only in the council chamber, so we appreciate you coming out this evening and learning more about your local government and what we're up to. So thank you all for being here this evening. We have Kavion Phillips with the Salvation Army that's going to lead us in our indication this evening.
Let us pray. Most gracious, Father, we just pause to say thank you. Thank you for blessing us with another day. Thank you for blessing us with an opportunity, Lord God, just to experience your blessing, Father. Father, I pray for all the ones who are gathered here, Lord God. I pray for their heart. I pray for their service to you, Father. I pray for all our leaders who are here, Lord God. I ask that you give them a double blessing, Lord God. God, I ask that you just have your way in this meeting, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. We're now gonna move to the public comment portion of our meeting. Items listed on the agenda are now open for public comment. Should you wish to comment on a specific agenda item or items, please approach the podium, state your name and the items you wish to address. Please limit your comments to three minutes total. City council members will not respond to comments or questions. Your comments will be taken into consideration during our deliberation. So let me just say real quick, if there's a specific item that you're here to speak about this evening that has a public hearing attached to it, you can look at the agenda. I know that many of you here this evening for the, is that item number eight? For an ordinance, the vaping ordinance, you'll have an opportunity when we get to item number eight to speak on that particular item. So you can wait until that time to speak on that. But if you want to speak regarding something on the agenda that does not have an open forum, you can step forward this time. So it looks like we have a familiar face.
It's a mirage.
We know your name, but tell us your name.
My name is Josephina Bonner. I am a citizen of the city of Lufkin, and I am here as an independent person, not representing any group. And the item that I have speaks to the agenda itself. Several, well, in April, some dates were distributed as to when hearings and things would be occurring. And I know Mr. Gee and I talked about that, but when I looked at the agenda and then I looked at that list, they don't match. In particular, starting with the September 2nd date where there's a public hearing that would be available for citizens to talk about the budget, that day is being proposed to be canceled. So I would like to, I don't know how we're gonna communicate that, especially to people like me who keeps pieces of paper. And then on the August 22nd date, that's a Friday, and I don't know if you're ready for that to be on a Friday. They signed with me, but I don't think citizens are normally knowledgeable of Friday meetings. And then August 19th is a Tuesday, but it's not a regular Tuesday, I don't think, with me. But particular dates that I'm concerned about, Mr. Gee, are August 22nd and September 2nd. And I know you can fix it, so I'm gonna allow you to do that.
Thank you. We'll certainly look into that. Anyone else this evening? All right, we're gonna close the public comment portion of our meeting and move to some special presentations that we have this evening. The first will be Angelina Beautiful Clean, Tree City, USA. The first presentation this evening is from Angelina Beautiful Clean. This year marks Lufkin's 35th consecutive year of receiving the Tree City, USA designation. The recognition highlights our city's commitment to responsible urban forestry and celebrates communities that prioritize tree care and public engagement. At this time, I'd like to welcome Zach Ovalgon, District Forester with Texas A&amp;M Forest, Forest Street, to present the designation.
Sir. Thank you all. Thank you all for having me.
Appreciate you being here.
Short write-up for congratulating y'all on becoming Tree City, USA. And so, good evening, everybody. My name is Zachary Ovalgon, and I serve as the District Forester for the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service, based here in the Lufkin area. It's a great honor to be here today to present the Tree City, USA Award to the city of Lufkin in recognition of its 35th consecutive year of commitment to urban forestry. Across the country, thousands of communities take pride in their tree canopies and work diligently to enhance them. Through this Tree City, USA program, these efforts receive national recognition and attention. Tree City, USA is a prestigious designation awarded to communities that meet the Arbor Day Foundation standards for effective urban forest management. Established in 1976 by the Arbor Day Foundation, the Tree City, USA program supports and celebrates incorporated communities and military bases that maintain active tree care programs. Cities of all sizes, from fewer than 100 residents to over a million, are eligible participants. During the Tree City, USA status, communities must meet four core standards of sound urban forestry, which Lufkin has done very well in doing so. They must maintain a tree board or department, enforce tree-related ordinances, invest in urban forestry, and celebrate Arbor Day annually, which we do, and we partner with Angelina Beautiful Clean every year. Lufkin's continued dedication to these standards alongside the support of Angelina Beautiful Clean, the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service, and many local partners has made this achievement possible. Arbor Day events in our community promote native tree planting, conservation, and education through ongoing projects and outreach. On behalf of Angelina Beautiful Clean and the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service, I am proud to present Tree City, USA flag and sign to the city of Lufkin in recognition of your efforts to make our city a more beautiful and tree-friendly community. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have the Lufkin Fire Department Life Saving Award. Tonight, we have the honor of presenting life-saving awards to some of our Lufkin Fire Department personnel. We are proud to highlight the courage and quick actions of these individuals who have made a life-changing difference in our community. Assistant Fire Chief Ryan Watson is here this evening to emcee the ceremony, while Chief Moody and Ms. Bennett will assist in presenting the awards as well. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On the morning of June 1st, just before noon, Engine 2, Med 4, and Battalion 1 were dispatched to a residence where a female patient was reported to be unresponsive, without a pulse, and not breathing. Upon arrival, crew found the patient's husband already performing high-quality CPR. The team quickly joined in, initiating advanced life-saving measures. Thanks to the rapid response and skilled intervention of her family, our firefighters, and the medics, something extraordinary happened. Before leaving the residence, the patient regained a steady pulse and even began to communicate with the crew. She was transported safely to the hospital, where care was continued by medical staff. This is the kind of outcome we all train and hope for, a life saved. Today, we recognize and honor the actions of the crew members who exemplified the very best of what it means to serve. For their courageous and skilled response, they're receiving the Fire Service Life Saving Award. Please join me in recognizing the following crew members. Driver Operator Jonathan Hammond. Driver Operator Blaine Byram. Firefighter Andrew Knight. And Captain Brad Erlich. Your dedication and professionalism made all the difference. You saved a life. Thank you for your service and commitment to excellence.
I'm in the middle.
Also, on May 14th, Engine 3, Med 3, and Battalion 1 responded to a call at the Lufkin Middle School. A patient was found unresponsive with no pulse and not breathing. School district staff applied an AED that delivered two shocks to the patient. Fire Department crews arrived quickly and provided additional life-saving care stabilizing the patient. During transport to the hospital, the patient regained a pulse. Now, that patient is preparing to return to work. An inspiration and an outcome and a testament to the crew's dedication. On May 29th, Med 5 was dispatched to a critical call. A patient in cardiac arrest. CPR in progress. Thanks to the immediate actions of the crew, the patient regained a pulse on scene and survived the incident, a powerful example of skill, readiness, and determination. While they're not able to be here with us today, we want to recognize the life-saving efforts of firefighter Chase Holcomb, firefighter Zacharias Weber, Battalion Chief Jared Sal, Captain Jeff McReynolds, driver operator Marcus Manning, firefighter Ivan Tapia, and firefighter Clayton Falk.
All right, so one more time, please join us in congratulating and thanking these incredible first responders for their service and life-saving efforts. All right, next up is the Lufkin Police Department Meritorious Service Award. Lastly, we have the privilege of recognizing another heroic first responder, Officer Christian Ibarra, for his decisive action and swift response that also resulted in life-saving, or, I'm sorry, resulted in saving a life. Chief Thomas is here to share the details surrounding Officer Ibarra's courageous actions.
Mayor, Council, tonight we'd like to recognize Officer Christian Ibarra for his quick response and decisive action in an incident that occurred on July 29th. Officers were dispatched to a situation involving a person experiencing a mental health crisis. When Officer Ibarra arrived on scene, he saw the individual climbed over the guardrail and over passed, was holding him by their hands. Acting quickly and calmly, Officer Ibarra pulled the person over the guardrail, preventing potentially tragic outcome. His actions exemplify the professionalism, integrity, and respect that we strive in our department. On behalf of the city of Lufkin, it's our honor to present Officer Ibarra with certificate of recognition and the Medal of Meritorious Service.
We honor all of you and your commitment to the dedication to the Lufkin Fire and Police Departments in this great city, so thank you again for these life-saving measures. It's quite an honor to be here this evening and represent the city as a whole and get to honor such a great group of individuals as our first responders and police. So I want to give you guys another round of applause this evening. All right, we're now gonna give you an opportunity, if you were here this evening for one of these presentations and you'd like to leave, we're gonna give you an opportunity to do that. If you want to hang out, we'd love to have you hang out as well. And as these folks are leaving, if those of you in the back want to take the open seats, you're welcome to do that. All right, we're now gonna move to the consent agenda. Council, I'll give you an opportunity to take a look at that, and then we need a motion in a second.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. On to the business agenda, item number four this evening. I'm going to recuse myself because I'm this applicant's landlord, so I'm gonna turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Schenkel.
Okay. Conduct a public hearing and consider approval of second reading of ordinance granting a special use permit for commercial amusement indoors on property addressed as 105 Cotton Square, Lufkin, Texas. Mr. Gee?
This is a second reading, as was stated. Staff received a request for a special use permit to allow for indoor commercial amusement. This is at 105 Cotton Square. The property is located in the Central Business Zoning District. After review, staffs found this change to be consistent with the existing uses and zoning, as well as the future land use classifications for this property. Planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended approval, and the city council did as well on their July 15th meeting. Staff recommends council conduct a public hearing and consider approval of this zone change ordinance, special use.
All right, at this time, we'll open this item of public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please approach the podium. If not, we'll close the public hearing and go to the comments from the council. What is your pleasure?
I believe that we approve this.
A second.
If the motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Thank you, Mr. Schenkel. On to agenda item, business agenda, item number five. Conduct public hearing and consider approval on first reading of an ordinance granting a zone change request to apartment for 615 North Brigade Street, Lufkin, Texas. Kevin?
We received a request for the zone change. You can see the existing zoning map without the property outlined in red with a red cross hatch. The request was to change from residential large to apartment to bring in an existing multifamily use into zoning compliance. The property is surrounded by a mix of residential and commercial and light manufacturing uses. Staff finds the proposed zone change is consistent with the current uses and the current zoning, as well as the neighborhood commercial and medium-density future land use classifications. Planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended approval on July 28th, and staff recommends council conduct a public hearing and consider approval of this ordinance. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Kevin. This is a public hearing. If you wish to speak on this item, you may step forward this time. There being no one, we're gonna close the public comment portion of this item and move to comments from the council.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number six. Conduct public hearing and consider approval on first reading of an ordinance granting a zoning change request to office for 1313 Wildbrier Drive, Lufkin, Texas. Kevin?
This request to change from residential large to office is intended for the development of office space. This is a vacant property surrounded by a mix of residential uses. You can see on the area map there, the adjacent commercial uses are American Real Estate, Angelina Title. You've got Tall Pines Family Clinic across the loop from them. The land use classification is commercial corridor with a commercial future land use classification as well for this property fronting the loop. Planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended approval on July 28th, and staff recommends council conduct a public hearing and consider approval of the ordinance changing the zone. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Gee. This is a public hearing. Looks like we already have someone here this evening. Thanks for getting here early. You want to tell us your name real quick before you kick off your comments?
Okay, sure. I'm Melody Rose, and I live on Turtle Creek Drive, near this property that has been, that they're trying to rezone. And I would like to point out, and we'll have more evidence later, there were five houses or five lots in that area that have been totally taken on. You can't, the city can't sell it, you can't build anything on it. And those three that are there, the property in question is next to the highway, I don't really even understand how on earth that property is any different than the two lots beside it. So my concern is, this is a major flood zone, major flood zone. It has been for years. I've lived there in my home since 2016, and many, many, many times, when it rains, harder than normal, the streets flood, the ditches flood, and my concern is for not only my property, but my neighbors' properties as well, that building something here, I just don't understand how that's not in the flood zone. There's a giant ditch out there, you know, there's all kinds of things happening there. I'm not against progress. I'm actually for it. I'm a Lufkinite. I have lived here. I was raised here, went to St. Cyprian's, right down the street. Like, I am a great citizen of Lufkin, pay my taxes, all that stuff. But when it comes to maybe having this flood zone there in a hard rain, and there's a new office building or whatever, parking lot, something there, the concern is very high for me that my property and the other two next to me are going to be flooded. There is a part that goes down from around, it's about eight houses, that the city built a new ditch for. The ditch works pretty good, but the street gets flooded and all that. Now, two weeks ago, it rained here, and the rain was so heavy that it actually breached my bridge. I have a bridge in my driveway. It had a lot of, you know, stuff on top of it. I've had to repair my bridge three times since I have lived in my home. It rots out the wood. At one point, every rain would come down, come across my bridge from the street, and then off the side and into the ditch that goes under Turtle Creek Drive, in a way. So if it's rotting my bridge already, I'm just super concerned about building a structure on this property, which is next to two properties that can never be sold, can never be built on, along with their three other properties nearby there that are also under that restriction with the city. I'd like to ask you to please consider my neighbors, myself, that this is a dangerous situation, and I hope that you guys will agree that it's not the safest place to build an office building. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
So, we moved here, my name is Tom Dormstetter. We moved here when I was six years old in 1976, lived in Brook Hollow, and, you know, this kind of brings back flashbacks of being able to get into, as long as we lived in Brook Hollow, flashbacks of just being able to get in. I'll call this the "God willing and the creek don't rise" issue. What I have a problem with on this is that we've got a 13,000 square foot lot that y'all's zoning for an office only requires 6,000, but as you can see on this map, this entire property that y'all are trying to rezone is in the floodway. It's in the special flood hazard area. And right behind it, the lots behind it are vacant lots because I've been told that the city took those back, the lot across the street, and then two lots on Reen as well have, are owned by the city. And I've got video of, I thought that St. Cyprian's back in May of last year, I pulled over because I thought they had a water fountain out in there, they'd built this water fountain, but it was actually during the flood, one of y'all's sanitary sewer was shooting up water, like this beautiful display, when it was flooded through there. So, you know, this is a long-term issue. I don't know what y'all are planning on doing with the five lots that y'all have bought. They're just vacant right now, so are y'all planning on doing a regional pond in there? Or was, because this is right in that area of a special hazard. So I have a couple of questions. I know y'all can't answer them, but hopefully this will be brought into the dialogue when y'all are deciding this. Does the proposed development project meet the requirements of the NFIP, which is the National Flood Insurance Program, and the community's floodplain management ordinance that is required by FEMA? What is the BFE required on this lot? That's the base flood elevation that they're gonna be required to bring in soil to put this building on to get it out of the floodplain, which brings a whole nother set of problems because if you've got the floodplain this wide, and then you decide to put, raise out, and just to understand for context, I responded to Baton Rouge in, I think, 2017. I did 40,000 houses of flooding. Then I went to the Blanco River where the little boys and the little girl were still not found at that time. I did 42 miles of cleanup on that river, and I know what the trauma is. It was every, it was 115 ranches, and every one of those that we touched, they wanted to tell us about that night. And so, the whole Kerrville deal just brings back that whole, you know, the whole deal. There's nothing worse than a house flooded. And so, if you've got a floodplain that wide and you bring up, you're displacing water. Where is that impeded, where's that water gonna go? It's gonna go to houses like Melody Rose's. It's gotta go somewhere. It's a force that's, you know, not gonna follow that little lines that are drawn on there.
Mr. Dormstetter, we got three minutes. Can you wrap it up?
I'll be finished in 10 seconds. Thank you. What happens with the water that's impeded? Has a floodplain study been required or provided to the city by the applicant? And then the other question was, what's gonna happen with all those lots y'all bought? Thank you.
All right, do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this item? All right, if there's no one else, we're gonna close the public hearing and move to comments from the council.
I think that this is in my ward, I mean, this is the first I've heard the concerns from this. It causes me concern, you know, when you've got something in a floodplain and you raise that property up, that means that water, more water is going elsewhere, and that bothers me, without having some more information right now.
So you can currently build a home on this property, is that right?
It's my understanding this property is in the floodplain. The floodplain is developable. There's standards that have to be met for all development, but the floodway is not developable. You cannot build anything in the floodway.
So the, oh, go ahead, Mayor, sorry.
I was just gonna say, we don't have any idea. We've not seen a site plan of what they plan to put there yet, Scott. Is that right?
Yeah.
I have not seen a site plan on this. The property is in the floodplain. Of course, the applicant has been, we've discussed this in terms of he will be required to get with an engineering firm to bring any kind of construction up to elevate the requirements of the property and to make sure no one else is affected during the runoff.
To meet our standards. All right, thanks, sir.
Yes.
But then the property behind it, on two, the city owns because it is in the floodway, so the line behind it's gonna flood? It's part of this? I mean, I'm just looking at, trying to understand the green here, that we own that or the city owns that piece behind it?
Yeah, I'm not sure of the mapping, but I know that there were properties in that area back in 2006 or 2007. The city of Lufkin participated in a hazard mitigation grant program that evaluated property losses from flooding for residential structures. FEMA supported the acquisition of the property to demolish the house and remove it. So it was a repetitive flood program for housing. Those, there was criteria that had to be met for them to be eligible, and those were acquired by the city, purchased by the city, and dedicated to green space in perpetuity per FEMA requirements.
And then the lot in front of it, the lot that we're looking at tonight, didn't have anything on it? So then that's why FEMA wasn't interested?
It was not a residential structure, so it wasn't impacted by that program. It didn't have a house that was...
Right, yeah, yeah, that would have been flooded had it sat there.
Incurring regular insurance charges.
So we can assume the houses that were on those green lots that were demolished, subject to the FEMA regulations, were not built to the same permissible specifications that we have today?
That would be a safe assumption. Their base flood elevations were lower before they got repetitively flooded during the flood. Their base flood elevations were lower before they got repetitively flooded during events.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Scott, do you know how soon you will have the site plan information from this petitioner?
If this is approved fairly quickly, of course, they will be discussing with an engineering firm all requirements for protection of neighborhood properties.
Including storm?
Fairly quickly.
Including storm warning?
Yes, yes.
Hey, Mike, I don't want to put you on the spot, I know this is in your customer, but you're kind of an expert in these areas. You want to come up here and just answer, you have time to answer a few questions about this?
And you didn't want to speak today.
So, well, so question number one, I assume the houses built on the green lots were below the, you know, now they require you, like, if you were to build a house on this lot, you got to build it up a couple of feet?
You got to build a house now, one foot above base flood elevation. So whatever the base flood elevation is established by FEMA, you have to build one foot above that.
Do you have any idea, like, in this particular area, it says 251 feet? I'm looking at that right?
Yeah, do that. One and a half.
Okay, so about?
What's the question?
The, so the elevation of the lot right now looks like?
I have no idea of what the elevation of that is.
It just looks like?
Can't tell how much it's flooded.
Gotcha.
It just shows the approximate.
That's, I mean, you've got the elevation to be determined, but I personally, at this point, I didn't look.
Sure, no, no, no.
I know that it will have to be set in at the right height, and it has to deal with the drainage.
And once you build up to that, above that base flood elevation, you could get, you could opt out of the, I mean, you wouldn't have to buy flood insurance if you could show them your house.
Yes, you can request, once you've built that one foot above and the ground decided is still all above base flood and five feet out around it with your air conditioner and everything unit, you can apply for a Loma, letter of map amendment, and not pay flood insurance on your structure. You would still be in the floodplain, but they would remove your house if they accept your Loma request.
Great. Thank you very much. Anybody else want to ask, Mike, any questions? All right, thank you very much. Don't send us a bill.
So, so what if they raise it up and it's built, and like she was saying, it pushes more water downstream and floods other houses?
Yeah, so I used to live in that area, and I know the, familiar with the flooding right there. I would think, had there been a house there, that probably would have also been taken in as part of that federal program, and they would have torn the house down, and you would never have been able to build on that lot. Just speculation.
Right.
Brook Hollow has enough flooding as it is now, and even though, oh, it may be a 100-year flood, we have rainfalls that fall quicker than 100 years. Maybe two or three or four of them, especially the last 10 years.
True. I mean, you could currently build a house there, and you could build it up, but somebody do that, I don't know, but I think that would be a smaller footprint than a commercial building. Scott, if we had a, good. So, yeah, we'll let you, just make it quick. Go ahead.
Okay, just really, so for those of you who don't know, this neighborhood was built, my house was built in 1962. So, no, there were not any regulations like there are now. I bought the house, it's a charming house, it's really cute, it's perfect for me. It has come close to flooding, it hasn't flooded since I've been there, but it has, over time, flooded several times. And that is our concern as the people who live next to this, is that if you build something up to the new regulations, then it's going to run off inside of our homes. And that's all I really wanted to say. It's an older neighborhood, everyone knows that, so.
Right. Thank you.
Scott, if there's a site plan approved that, would it spec out, like, the slab parking lot graded toward the loop where it drains, you know, outside versus inside toward the neighborhood?
Yes.
Or is that binding, I guess, if there was something that we could attach to this to?
Well, that's, yeah, that really is, this is.
So they're probably not going to pay to have that done if this, if they don't know, because that's, there'd be some cost there, so we don't know if they would do that or not.
Yeah, they wouldn't, they wouldn't jump off in full engineering until this was approved, is the thing. I don't know.
So, I find that hard, though, because it's like, well, I'm not really apt to approve it unless we see something.
Yeah.
But we're not going to see something unless we approve it, and I'm not trying to be apprised on that, but I'm like, eh, we can't, we, we don't see what's going to go there, and there's no guarantees that there's, it's going to be taken care of, but not the right way. I just, I feel that it's going to be hard to say, oh, let's go for it, when we don't know what we're going for. And that's my opinion, but I, I'm out.
Yeah, can we approve with amendment that they come with a site plan that wouldn't?
What we need to do if we wanted more information?
Postpone to another day, yes.
I make a motion, we postpone to another day.
I second that.
And get more information, so we can make the progress.
So do we want the information to be, I mean, you want, you want a site plan that an engineer's done that shows the effects of?
Yeah, right. If they deal with it at that elevation.
You got that, Scott?
Yes.
All right, very good. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number seven, conduct a public hearing, consider approval on first reading of an ordinance granting a special use permit for institutions of religious, educational, and philanthropic nature. Home property address is 5104, 5204 South First Street, Lufkin, Texas.
This is a special use permit to allow for the expansion of the Neuronhole Museum of Natural History. This is within a planned unit development, and the surrounding area includes commercial offices and a cemetery. Staff finds the special use permit consistent with the current area zoning and uses, as well as the corridor commercial, future land use designation. This is along 59. Planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended for approval on July 28th, and staff recommends council conduct a public hearing and consider approval of the ordinance.
Thank you, Kevin. This is a public hearing. If you wish to speak on this item, you may step forward this time.
Good afternoon, I'm Tomas Gonzalez, and I'm the former Lufkin gear employee and the president of the board of the Neuronhole Museum of Natural History, and a resident of the settlement, neighbor of the location. I've been volunteering for the museum for the past 10 years, and it's a great institution, and I'm coordinating with the engineers and architects for the design and construction of the project. And I want to thank Scott for his great support in expediting this hearing, and thank the board for hearing this. One item that is important for the development of the site, as we have proposed, is the access road that's part of the Renfro development from which the land was acquired. I understand the board previously approved that road, and we thank you for that, and we hope that when it comes back again, it is likewise approved quickly so that we can go ahead and have access for school buses and large vehicles and parking, so the museum can serve the community in a better way. So, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? All right, we're going to close the public hearing, go to comments from the council.
How may we approve?
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number eight, conduct public hearing, consider approval on first reading of an ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance, the city of Lufkin, Texas, being ordinance number 3368, by amending Article 19. Schedule of permitted uses to include electronic cigarette and vape shop retail stores, and providing definitions, requirements, and an effective date. Kevin?
Like many cities across Texas, Lufkin has seen a notable increase in retail businesses selling electronic cigarettes and vaping products. Currently, the city does not have an ordinance to place, or in place, to regulate these establishments. To help protect public health, especially that of children and teens, it's been determined that a vape shop should be appropriately distanced from sensitive areas such as schools and churches. This will help minimize potential adverse impacts on our community as well. The ordinance before you proposed ordinance would restrict new electronic cigarette and vape shop retail stores to light manufacturing and heavy manufacturing zoning districts, and require approval of a special use permit. It also includes a minimum distance from residential areas, schools, churches, daycares, hospitals, and other vape shops. This ordinance does not affect stores where vape-related products account for less than 50% of annual sales. Existing vape shops will be classified as legal nonconforming uses. Now, as such, if the use ceases for six months, the status is forfeited, and any new use would have to conform to this ordinance. It was considered by planning and zoning on July 28th and approved by a five-to-one vote. Counsel, what you have before you is intended to address the obvious community concern, and do that in a prudent manner that minimizes legal challenges. Staff recommends council conduct a public hearing and consider approval of this ordinance. But before we open the public hearing, I would ask the city attorney to speak on the development of the ordinance as, as a point of discussion.
Thank you, Mr. V. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I'm so happy to see all of you here this evening. My name is Kristi Skilern, I'm the city attorney. I've been here for three years. I see some of my teen court volunteers in the audience, which makes me super happy as well. This ordinance, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about how it was developed, so you'd know the process the city went through in coming to this final ordinance. It was in a direct response to concerns raised by community members about these vapor retail stores and their proximity to schools, churches, and places where teens and kids congregate. So, we have carefully worked over the last five months with several drafts of this ordinance, multiple revisions, to ensure the ordinance is thoughtful, effective, and also constitutional, which is my concern as the city attorney. I've consulted with various departments, including the city planners' office, code enforcement, the police department, as well as engaged citizens to gather the information before I even proposed this ordinance to council. I've reviewed our existing ordinances, which ban smoking, including electronic cigarettes in public places, which is a good start, but there was no ordinance relating specifically to vape, vaping, and vape retail stores in the city until now. It's important to note that city ordinances, not only do they need to be constitutional, they cannot be arbitrary against a particular business. Business owners have property rights in their businesses that are protected by the Commerce Clause of the Constitution. So I have to be concerned that the ordinance that are passed and written and proposed to council are legal statutorily by state law as well as the Constitution, and I take an oath, oath to do that. Since Planning and Zoning Committee, however, there's a couple of corrections based on citizen input that I would like to make to the ordinance that I'm proposing to council. I have copies of a draft with two highlighted provisions. If y'all would like copies, we can pass those out. One of which is basically just a typographical change, and I'll wait for a minute for those to be passed out. My other concern is that the ordinance applies equally to all legally operating businesses in the city. We can't just single out one particular business because we don't like the ill effects of products that they are selling if the state has regulated them and also said that they are legal. So, that is kind of the balancing test that I had to do when drafting the provisions of this ordinance for council's consideration. As far as the two small modifications, there was a typo on the whereas language on the fourth whereas, where I had local government code, that's actually Health and Safety Code, Section 161082. And the other change I'd like to make is in Section 4, which is the provision that restricts new electronic cigarette or vape retail stores shall be located within 1,000, oh, no, electronic cigarette or vape retail stores shall be located within 1,000 feet of a residential use or residential district, or within 1,000 feet of any location as defined in Section 4.10.061. I don't know why we have so many numbers in our local ordinances, but that's just the way it is. B1 through 6. Now, what B1 through 6 is, are all the places that we have concerns that kids congregate, like parks, churches, schools. So before, the prior ordinance only said churches and schools, because I based that on many other city ordinances that I reviewed. I also consult with other city attorneys in similar population-type cities to see what they're doing in, in proposing ordinances with these kinds of issues. So I just wanted you to know some of the things that this has been thoroughly researched and vetted, and I have put in there, instead of just church and the schools, I put parks, recreation facilities, arcades, and all of the things where kids congregate in Section 4. That is the change that I have made to what was in the planning and zoning section. I believe this ordinance is, is a good balance, and honestly, it's a very good first start for, because before, we have nothing. And so, I am proposing that this council review the ordinance with the two changes I mentioned, and consider approval this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Okay, before we open this up this evening, I just want to make a few points. This is on the agenda tonight because the city council here cares about the communities, the reason they serve, they volunteer to be on this council, and they wanted to see something done here. It was brought to our attention, we appreciate the organizations in this community that brought this to our attention, and it's something that we felt needed to be addressed. Now, understand, there's multiple levels of laws. There's municipal law, there's local law, there's state law, federal law. There are certain things the city can regulate, and that's what we're here tonight to do, but we don't want to pass an ordinance that will not be upheld in court. So that's important to us, and that's what Kristi was speaking to this evening. She's done a, a great job in researching this, and we want to hear from you guys tonight on maybe ways we can improve this that make sense, but we have a lot of people, I'm sure that are here to speak this evening, and we want to give you an opportunity to do that. We want to keep this civil, because we're all here to find the very best solution we can. The council also understands this is a health and human safety issue. We realize the effects of vaping and the dangers involved, so we want you to understand that. So with that being said, we're going to allow you guys to, to step forward, we're going to open up the public hearing, give you an opportunity to speak this evening.
State your name.
And if you would, when you step up, state your name for the record.
I'm good.
Yes, sir.
All right, hello, my name is Kendrick Butler. I'm a recent graduate of Lufkin High School.
I'm sorry, real quick, and we need to limit everyone's comments to three minutes. So we're going to give you three minutes to speak. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. The reason I'm speaking today is this year I was a part of the Drug Free All-Stars, it's a program under the Coalition. I wanted to be a part of this program because I seen how drugs affected a lot of my classmates and peers when they tried it, and then they got addicted to it on a day-to-day basis. As this, I realized this was something I never wanted for myself, and I didn't want for nobody else other than my peers. And then, it was such a high percentage at Lufkin High School of students using vapes. Because of this number, I went on things with the Angelina County Sheriff's Department. I went on two in June and in July of 2025. Out of the 10 stores in Angelina County, seven of them were in Lufkin. It was really easy to get tobacco products and vapes. Just because of that, we wanted to show y'all an example of what was going on in our community. Thank you for your time, and y'all have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kendrick.
Good evening, my name is Shakoya Grimes. I'm an employee of ADAC, but today I stand before you as a parent, educator, and a lifelong resident of Lufkin. I've had the privilege and responsibility to not only watch my children grow up, but also see many children in our community grow. I see them on good days, hard days, when they're curious, tired, excited, or overwhelmed. I'm also seeing some of these same children being affected by vape use. At first, the use is barely noticeable. You may notice the scent of something sweet in the air. Teachers are noticing more frequent bathroom breaks. We now know that's because they're going to vape in the bathroom. And then the sudden change in their behavior, these students are becoming less focused and experiencing mood swings. Vaping has become a growing problem in our schools. Advertising is a line to our students. By marketing, it is something harmless. That is, that is just flavor, or it's not as bad as a cigarette. But let me be clear, vaping is not safe. It's addictive, it's damaging, and for our youth, it's dangerous. Kids who vape are more likely to start other substances later. These kids have said that they want to stop, but because of the nicotine addiction, they can't. And they're thinking about going to the bathroom when they're in class, so they're not focused, they're not getting their work done, they're missing school because of vaping-related illnesses, as well as being suspended from school because they're in possession of vapes. These are real kids with real features, who are being targeted by these products that are designed to be easy to hide from their parents, their teachers, or fun to use when they're hanging out with their friends. Our students' health, mental well-being, and education are all being derailed as early as elementary school because of a vape. As a parent, we need to stay involved. As teachers, we need to educate. As a community, we need to take responsibility. As a community, we need to take responsibility. Start by making it harder for our students to access these products. We need to set rules and follow through, but most of all, we need to show our children that there is a better path, a path of self-respect, health, and education. They deserve it. It's time to hold these companies accountable for targeting our youth. Punish the vape shop owners who sell these products but don't check IDs. We need to speak up when we see this. Let's stop pretending that vaping is just a phase or a trend. It's a health crisis that's affecting an entire generation. We are losing students to addiction before they've even had a chance to grow into who they really are meant to be. Our children are watching us, so let's show them that we care, and let's take action. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lila Knapp, and I was a member of the 2425 Drug Free All-Stars. I also play a very active role within my church and community as a recent graduate of Lufkin ISD. I am in support of this proposed ordinance that limits the location of vape shops. Throughout my years at Lufkin ISD, I've seen a large increase in the use of vapes and e-cigarettes. A main contributor to this problem is how easy it is to gain access to these products. These bright and colorful designs and youthful flavors such as Blue Raz Ice, Berry Bliss, or Cotton Candy, and many other flavors are made to attract the attention of the youth, not older people. Not only are these products directed at young people, but they're also sold to us in the vape shops and gas stations all over Lufkin. Vape shops are often located near schools, parks, and other places where young people spend time, making it easier for the youth to access these products. This ordinance will help reduce the visibility and accessibility of vape shops to minors. I've seen people close to me, both friends and family, become addicted to nicotine through vaping, and it's changed their lives. They struggle in school, lose motivation, and their relationships are affected. It's also impacting me and other students directly. Some days, I had to avoid using the bathrooms at school because they were crowded with people vaping, and I didn't want to get caught in that environment or get in trouble. This isn't just about individual choices. It's about how vaping is disrupting our schools and our daily lives. As long as there is easy access, this problem will only grow in communities and schools. As of November 2024, the city of Lufkin has 15 standalone vape shops and 32 other stores that sell vapes and e-cigarettes. 61% of retailers are within 2,000 feet of schools, parks, or trails. The proposed zoning change is a great start, but it could be stronger by including restrictions on zoning for any retailer that sells e-cigarettes, not just vape shops. I hope you impose even stricter regulations for our beloved community, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening, council members. My name is Kara Phillips, and I was a part of Drug Free All-Stars program of Class 2024 as a St. Cyprian's representative. That experience really opened my eyes to the impact of substance abuse, especially vaping, has on our youth and our community. I'm here to support the proposed vape shop zoning ordinance and to ask that be made even stronger. The truth is vape shops aren't just popping up, they're clustering, often in areas where teens are hanging out. This over-concentration does not just impact or increase exposure, it does change the feeling of our city. It sends the message that vaping is normal. When you walk through a part of town and see shop after shop with bright lights and smoke signs, it takes away the family-friendly image Lufkin is known for. And it's not just what we see, it's what it does. In ninth grade, one of my close friends started vaping due to the mere convenience of how easy vapes are able to get, but as vapes do, it started to take over. He pulled away from people, relied on vaping to cope, and on my 16th birthday, he spent most of the night outside vaping alone. Addiction doesn't always look dramatic. Sometimes it's quiet, but it's definitely real. We need to protect youth from all new retailers selling e-cigarettes, not just vape shops. Special permits, zoning restrictions, those policies matter, because when we limit access, we give people like my friend a better chance, a fighting chance, to choose something different and to choose something better. Thank you for your time and for your leadership.
Hello, everyone. My name is Stephanie Olfer, Director of the JD Center of Hope, which is formerly the Hope Center. Whoever came up with this here, this is needed. I'm very concerned about our children, very passionate about our children. Just last year, we had a young lady that was naive to the fact of understanding what a vape was, and a friend of hers gave it to her. Had she went into bathroom and smoked it, she probably wouldn't be here today. My concern is, what are we going to do more about the ordinance of these vape shops popping up? I do understand people want to make a money, they need a business, but the distance to it is just like if I was a drug dealer and I was 500 feet away from the school, you would lock me up. But what are we going to do with those with this stores and stuff that's close where our kids can go out, get access to it, come back to the school, and pass it on to kids that not educated with that? This is a very deep concern here because we losing our children. I don't care if they Spanish, black, and white, they are still our children, and we have to make sure that we be the liaison to make sure our children is safe in the schools. And my concern is why is so easy that it's getting to the schools to our kids? In Jersey, we had a safety route. When they came in, all backpacks were checked. They had to go to a detector. We had to search them down, and when they went out and come back in, we had to do it again. I think when we first got here, we mentioned that, what you call a safety detector, that the kids go in, not just one side. The schools are built now, there's many interests to the school, and sometimes we have to make sure that there's no adults are giving our kids what they don't need. So this is a great concern for our community. We are losing our children. I look at these young people get up, they are concerned, we should be more concerned because these are our future. And the kids that's in school, it doesn't matter how their parents are, it took a village to help me where I'm at today. So I'm asking y'all, let's be the village to help our children today in these schools.
Good evening. My name is Nevea Maynard, and I'm a junior in high school. I want to speak today on the lack of regulation and how that affects me and other youth in Lufkin. We are in an epidemic where adolescents are getting nicotine and marijuana products, and it's caused us three things. One, we have started using at younger ages. Two, it has enabled us to progress to harder substances. And three, schools have become a dark place where these products are resold to myself and my peers. I want to really help paint a picture of the reality I'm living in. My mother gave me up when I was a child due to her own addiction, and I was placed into foster care until the age of seven. I felt abandoned, leaving me feeling unworthy of love. Being a teenager is hard, but to add on early childhood trauma makes it just like gasoline waiting to be lit. The gasoline of my life was me sitting in the back of my classroom when someone pulled out the dab pen and offered it to me. Getting high was incredible because for the first time, I felt numb. I was hooked. I continued to purchase nicotine and marijuana products at school from my peers who admitted they purchased them at vape shops and gas stations around the corner. I became more aggressive, I stopped trying at school, and eventually had to be placed in rehab. During this day, it really opened my eyes with how bad off I was, and to this day, I'm still sober. My sobriety day is May 7th, 2024, and while I stand proud today to say that, I also stand feeling defeated for the daily struggle I still go through. I changed, but the world around me didn't. I go to school every day only to see the same thing, bathrooms as distribution stations, backpacks filled with vape shop products, and my classmates always letting me know it's there if I change my mind. Vape shop owners can argue it's not their fault that 21, that people 21 and older purchase their products and sell it to youth. For one, that's wrong because I can go buy some at vape shops here in Lufkin and not get carded. Two, just because it isn't your fault doesn't mean it's not your problem. You still live in the world where my generation of people will eventually be in charge, leading this world. So quit disowning this epidemic and start using the power you have to help change it. You can argue that not every youth goes through trauma, but unfortunately, we live in a world where divorce, abuse, and mental illness is common, and I can think of 10 of my friends that have been through something traumatic enough to cause them to want to change the way they feel. Listen, I'm not trying to affect the way vape shop owners make money, but if more regulation causes their income to decrease, then that just proves my point. To the vape shop owners and political figures here today, do you have kids? How old are they? Maybe you haven't had a problem with them using yet. What are you going to do in the future if they start? Maybe they just go through an experimental phase, or maybe they don't. And that dab pen is the lighter to their gasoline, and that sparks an addiction to harder drugs. What are you going to do then? Instead of what are you going to do then, what about what are you going to do now? It's that a 16-year-old has to fight for more regulation. Growing up, I have constantly been told by adults to go to school, don't do drugs, do good, and now that I'm sober and doing those things, I need help from adults to have the power to make that change. We need to start treating the regulation on these products as a public health issue and not a moral failure. Us youth who are sober will continue to advocate for recovery, but what will you do to help us?
Hello, I'm Melanie Patterson, and I have close to 40 years of working in substance use disorder treatment and prevention. So I'm coming today because this is a topic that's very, means a lot to me, and I'm talking to you about from the viewpoint of creating a healthier community for the youth. And what I want to say is, when I started out in substance use disorder treatment, I was on the front lines when they were battling the HIV epidemic, when they were battling the crack cocaine epidemic, and many epidemics that followed. This is another epidemic that is facing our youth. And at the time, and what I've learned through all these years, is that we've got to get ahead of it, we've got to get in front of it, we have to address it, we have to have policies. And you know, why can't Lufkin be the shining example for the other cities in Texas to look at and say, hey, let's call them and ask their advice. Let's look at their policy and see how they did it. And I'm a very visual person, so I bought some statistics with me that really hit home with me, and these statistics are from 2024, and I couldn't get just Lufkin, but I have for Angelina County. Now, for many of us, we think that there's a dollar store on every corner. At least, that's what I think. So then you look at accessibility and availability, and you know, it's really nice and it's really convenient to have a dollar store so readily accessible. Well, what I want to bring to your attention is that with the Family Dollar and Dollar General combined in 2024, we had $25 stores. And we think that there's one on every corner, right? But in that same timeframe, we had 86 vape shops. So what message does that send to our youth? What message does that send to the community about the density and the availability? So let's make Lufkin a star example of working to build a healthier and better community for our youth.
Good evening. I'm Roxy Parbarlow, and I am a participant in ADAC's Youth Recovery Community Program. I'm here to talk about the products and vape stores in our community in Lufkin. It is important to me that I speak on this issue because this is not just a simple meeting for decision or new ordinance or the effect it will have on businesses, but for youth like me who suffer from addiction. It is also, it is also a matter of our well-being, our future, and unfortunately, even life or death. I ask you please to take a moment and try to imagine being me, a 17-year-old who has grown up, being exposed to the harsh reality of addiction, and the heartbreak, disappointment, and tragedy that it brings to not only the addict, but everyone around them. However, despite that being my entire childhood and life, every day, even up until now, I have tried my best to use that as my motivation, to choose a different path and not become a product of my environment, and to break that cycle. I made the choice to dedicate myself to positive and productive activities, such as swim, the YRC community, church, and school, including college courses and organizations that have helped me pursue my chosen career path, which is nursing. However, despite all these dedicated efforts of devoting my free time and energy to these positive things that I would keep, that would keep me on that better path that I so desperately wanted, I was blindsided by the reality and hard truth on just how easy and quickly it was to be in the position with what I thought was a trusted best friend. And being face-to-face with one of these products that are being sold and are made easily accessible to everyone, not just in vape stores, but now even in our local convenience stores. Once I tried these products and experienced the illusion of finally finding that release, that any young person who suffers from depression, self-image issues, and just wanting to belong and fit in so, and fit in, I begin to crave and want to use it daily. Now again, now once again, imagine being one of the many unfortunate youth, such as myself, who does not have their home as a sanctuary or safe place. And now, due to these products being so accessible, you also no longer have that safety at school. Because just going to the restroom exposes you and puts you at risk for a relapse, and then to take it even a step further. Not even being able to walk or drive a mile or two, mile or two down the road without looking over to see a place you know you could walk into and get these products, and that release you have now, become addicted to and battle daily to not give in to. Especially on a difficult day, which has unfortunately been a major contributing factor to relapses, and me giving in to the continuous temptation. Where is my safe place? I ask that you please help me to help myself in being able to break this cycle, so that I may be an example to others coming behind me, because the truth is, our youth is our future. And if nothing else, forget just protecting me, someone you don't know and may never see again. But what about protecting your children, your grandchildren, et cetera? Thank you so much for your time.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Brayden Alva, and before I get started, I have some maps that I'd like to provide. These are density maps of vape store locations and retailers within safe zones in just Lufkin alone.
I think we had a graphic. Jesse, do we have graphics? Graphic?
I'll go ahead and get started while she's passing those out. Like I said, my name is Brayden Alva. I'm a senior here at Lufkin High School, and I'm extremely involved in local and both statewide tobacco prevention organizations. I've seen the effects of addiction and how it impacts not only the users of these products, but everyone around them. The reason my parents aren't here to support me during this speech this time is because they're at my cousin's funeral. My cousin Anthony passed away over the weekend because he became in contact with a product that was laced. He died at the young age of 27 after unknowingly using a product like this. Sorry. So I'm here today as a way to honor him, and I really want to see a change in my own In addition to being a Drug Free All-Star, I'm also with an organization known as Texas Say What. This organization has given me the opportunity to speak at a statewide level to both adults and youth about the effects of these products. And a major takeaway that I learned from this was that the accessibility of these products is what makes it so dangerous. The more accessible a product is to youth, the higher the chances that they will get and use these products. The bright colors and sweet sounding flavors that come with this don't help either. These devices, since they're electronic, it allows for a higher nicotine concentration to be with these, so people who use these products get addicted faster and quicker. With all of these little, all of these negative effects, we still have little to no regulations on the marketing. The combination of both accessibility and marketing has led to 31% of high schoolers in our region to claim that they have tried vaping at least once. In fact, the most recent Texas School Survey of Drugs and Alcohol Report has shown that the average age or youth who have first reported trying vaping is at 12 and a half years old. That's the age where the majority of kids are first entering middle school. What's even more dangerous is that unless something changes in the current legislative session in Austin, we still have no restrictions or regulations on cannabis-infused e-cigarettes. This means that a kid of any age can walk into a vape store and purchase a cannabis-infused product. Another organization that I've began to work with is the Coalition. They did a study looking at all of the e-cigarette tobacco retailers in the city of Lufkin alone. On those maps that I provided, if you were to take a look, you can notice that 61% of these retailers are within 2,000 feet of schools, parks, or trails. And at the time that this map was created, there were 15 standalone vape shops within city limits alone. That number is now down to 12, but still, I wonder, why in the world do we need to have 12 of these shops? A real change needs to be made to ensure the safety of our community, and this zoning change is an amazing start. I wholeheartedly support this first step, and I hope that you will too.
Good evening. My name is Martha Hernandez, and I'm a past chair of the Coalition, but I'm here as a community member of Lufkin. I support additional restrictions for the retailers who sell e-cigarettes. The current proposed ordinance is a good first step, but it could be better. The current proposed ordinance is a good first step, but it could be better. When we know better, we do better. The problems associated with vaping or e-cigarettes, just to name a few, are the health risks, not enough regulations, and the over-concentration. On the health risks, we have vaping is linked to respiratory issues and nicotine addiction. The CDC warns of long-term health consequences, especially for teens and young adults. The not enough regulation, very few regulations currently, exist on e-cigarette marketing and sales compared to traditional tobacco products. And on over-concentration, too many vape shops in a small area can lead to saturation, reducing property values, and deterring other types of businesses. As far as for the statistics, those who began using at an early age are also at increased risk for mental ill, uh, health issues such as depression and psychosis. So we call to action, the proposed zoning change is a great start, but it could be stronger, including regu- restrictions on zoning for any new retailers that sell e-cigarettes, not just vape shops. I encourage you to take strong action to protect our community. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name is Natalie Purvis, and I'm an incoming senior at Central High School. I'm also a member of not only Drug Free Council, but I'm an incoming member of Drug Free All-Stars. Businesses and vape companies often rely on bright advertising and sweet candy-like flavors that target directly to younger people, making it easier for them to be curious or tempted. The closer these shops are, the more normalized vaping, smoking, and addiction becomes in the eyes of kids and teens. We have the option and responsibility to create safe spaces that protect children from harmful substances and the industries that profit from them. Stronger zoning allows them a clear message that the health of our children comes first. Thank you.
Uh, hi, my name is Carson McDaniel, I'm an incoming senior at Central High School, I'm president of student council, and a part of the Drug Free Council at my school. Uh, first of all, I have seen kids as young as fifth grade vaping in school. My mom's a fifth grade math teacher, and she can account for it, it's terrible. And when you walk into bathrooms at my school, there's at least five or six kids that are in there just vaping, and it's, it's hard to see people my age getting addicted and giving into that. Having vape shops in their ads right next to schools, hospitals, and churches just feels wrong. Kids on their way to school shouldn't have to pass giant signs for flavored nicotine when they're getting dropped off. It makes vaping seem normal or even cool when it's actually addictive and harmful. Near hospitals, it's just backwards. People are there trying to get healthy, and vapes just promote and it causes respiratory issues. And by churches, that's supposed to be a places for some, for support and community connection. Whenever you have vape shops outside, it just, it increases further temptation. It's not bad placement, it's targeted, and it's not okay. So I hope that y'all can work together to make our city better. Thank you.
Hey Sharon.
Yes.
Just real quick. Oh, that's fine, no, no, you're, yeah, she can take your seat.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Abel, I come and I want to first thank all the youth for the courage that they displayed this evening in sharing their stories. Um, you have honored your cousin in an amazing way, he's very proud of you. The, the words of this is a good beginning, it's a good effort. It would be my suggestion that the city council would send this back to planning and zoning, and that thank you for your effort, but we believe you can do better. What language is missing? There's no language about signage. There's no language about amortization, meaning that they can sell as much THC vape as they want. I would encourage, I'd love to know what cities we looked at in this planning opportunity, because the cities that I looked at also had per capita regulations to control how many are in the city. We can do better, and I think the message to our young people needs to be better. Last week it opened up a smoking joint. Isn't that a great sign when you're driving into town? Something to be real proud of. We can do better. And it starts with planning and zoning, and they need to send something back here that has more teeth to it.
Thank you Mayor Hicks and council members for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sharon Crook, I'm the executive director of the Coalition, a nonprofit substance use organization that's served our community for over thirty-five years. I see a few of you up here that were former Drug Free All-Stars, it's nice to see you. I applaud this initial effort to protect Luckin youth and create a safer community. Research tells us that greater access equals greater use. No matter where you go in Luckin, e-cigarettes are available. Vape stores feature products with cartoon characters and marketing that is deliberately crafted to catch the eyes of kids and convey the false impression that these products are harmless. There are very few limitations on vapes compared to the restrictions that we have on traditional cigarettes. This is alarming because vaping is over three times as common as smoking cigarettes among Texas students. And the vast majority of vape shops also sell intoxicating cannabis products, such as Delta Eight, because of a loophole in Texas state law. There are no regulations on these cannabis products, and there is no age gate prohibiting sales to youth. Use cannabis use is definitely a concern, with thirteen percent of middle and high school students reporting use. We know that early use of nicotine or cannabis leads to long-term consequences, such as increased risk of addiction, harmed brain development, and mental health issues such as depression and psychosis. An argument that we often hear is that there are only a few bad actors among retailers. Unfortunately, that's not always the case. In partnership with the Angelina County Sheriff's Office, we conduct underage tobacco checks throughout the county, with minors going in to purchase, attempt to purchase tobacco products. Since the beginning of twenty-twenty-five, in just seven months, twelve stores sold tobacco products to minors, and seven of those sales were e-cigarettes. Among the retailer, retailers that sold e-cigarettes to minors, five were standalone vape shops located right here in the city limits of Luckin. This is a critical moment to prioritize our kids and our community. Our neighbors to the north in MacAduchus and other cities across Texas have taken steps to restrict e-cigarette sales, and it's time for us to do the same. This is a solid first step, and I look forward to your future efforts to protect the health and well-being of our youth. Before I close, I want to recognize, there's a lot of students here that aren't speaking but are here in support of this, and so I would ask students, whether you're speaking or not, if you're here in support, will you please stand? Thank you, students, your, uh, your support of this is, is invaluable. Our kids are the ones that can give us the message and lead the way for what we want to have happen. We have lots of adults here, I know, but I specifically wanted to recognize the students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Abby Bennett, I'm a college student and a former Drug Free All-Star of twenty-twenty-three. I have lived in Luckin my whole life, and I graduated from Luckin and, and Luckin High School in twenty-twenty-three. I'm currently attending SFA to become a teacher. As I've driven around town for the last four years, I've seen the increasing amount of vape shops in our community. These stores are always catching my eye. Why? Well, because of the bright and colorful nature of the names and signs on the businesses, plus the large billboards along our roads. If these signs are catching my eye, I cannot imagine how inviting these stores might look to younger kids. The stores that sell e-cigarettes use bright colors, big signs, and colorful lights to draw people in. If these flashy stores are found on every corner and near public events, it increases the chances that kids will be attracted to and use vapes. We as a community need to do our best to help to keep dangerous and harmful products away from the most vulnerable people in our community. Thank you for your time.
Before I start, I want to do a brief apology, I'm still in the process of writing it, I just felt compelled to speak on this. Um, so hello, my name is Cassidy Knapp, um, I graduated from Luckin High School in twenty-twenty-three, and currently I work at Pilot Flying Day. Um, our motto for IDing customers is every guest, every time. I can't tell you how many people have come up to me and, you know me now, no. If I look old enough, but I'm not, I need to make sure you are too. And I wish it was just an egotistical claim that we're one of the few stores that actually does ID everybody, but as I bought my first vape at fifteen, I can confirm with my own story that that's how it goes. Um, when I was fifteen, I couldn't drive myself, I couldn't make any adult decisions, and I had many peers that vape, that were also underage, but they were sixteen, and they could drive, and they needed gas, so we'd go to gas stations, and I'd say, oh, well, I'll just go pay inside, it's okay. But at that point, I figured, you know what, why not ask? The worst they can do is ask for my ID, I just left it at the house, it's okay. Um, and it worked, every time. It became more than enthralling, it was everything I could think about. I mean, I had a few hits of my friends before this, and I was seeing it everywhere. Um, and not only did I feel older and cooler than I was, go figure, um, I got the flavors of food and sweets without having to eat, because on top of the chemical addiction, as well as the hand-to-mouth habit that had formed was the sheer amount of my peers that also vaped. Everybody was doing it, and it just made everything seem far less appetizing, I was less motivated in school, I was less motivated to maintain healthy eating habits, um, which almost detrimented my entire career of living as a whole. Um, from the start, it was just the desire to fit in, and then it was to be skinny, and then it was to calm my anxiety and practice regulated breathing. Um, any excuse I could come up with, I was trying to just, you know, no, I need it, I need it, because, um, uh, you know, chemical addiction affects you in ways that I can't begin to express, especially to a brain that's still developing. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Captain Jennifer Phillips from the Salvation Army, I planned on speaking tonight, but one of the things we get asked a lot is, um, what causes homelessness, or what are the causes of those things, as we help people at risk for homelessness on a regular basis, or experiencing homelessness at our offices right across the street. And so one of the things that I do find on a daily basis when speaking with our clients that come in the door, is that they have ACE scores, adverse childhood experiences, and traumatic things that happen in their lives. So I want you to think about your constituents, not just these young people who have been brave enough to speak tonight, but your constituents ten years from now, twenty years from now, thirty, forty years from now, and what can we do to protect our constituents in the future? Because they're here right now, and they're speaking, and they're speaking on behalf of themselves. But what can we do to, to prevent adverse childhood experiences that happen, that traumatize young people, that can affect their lives, and sometimes are the people that are coming in our doors, experiencing homelessness or at risk for homelessness because of addiction or mental health, because of exposure to things that were when they were young? So as we consider the things that we can do to protect our young people, as we consider what we could do to prevent adverse childhood experiences, which is a multitude of things, of course, but this is one way that we can continue to place some guidelines and restrictions to prevent things from the future. So our constituents, the homelessness epidemic that we're experiencing in our community, and communities all over the United States right now, um, hopefully we can start to prevent the trauma that's incurred at a younger age, so that we can have more effects of this, of constituents in our community here in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Gee? If I may provide just a little clarification, also, I've been so impressed with all the speakers this evening, thank you so much. Um, but in regard to the sign issue, the state has taken on that legislation, and as of September first, there is a prohibition relating to certain signs within a thousand feet from vape shops to schools and churches. So that's a positive step that, that your legislatures have put into effect as of nine one, and the city can enforce that law. So there cannot be outside vape shop signs within a thousand feet of schools or churches as of September the first. So I just wanted to provide some, uh, this, I guess, some additional information. Also, in regard to the cartoons and the, the, the marketing to young people, the legislature took that up as well, and as of September first, those figures and those cartoon carriers and, and those celebrities are not going to be allowed on vapes. So that's another, uh, law that can be enforced in the city, because the marketing to kids is, is just basically wrong. So I just wanted to provide, uh, some assurances in that regard, uh, for the signage and the, and the marketing to children of the vapes.
All right. Thank you.
Is it busy not for me? Uh, my name is Lori Bennett, I'm, I'm the mom to two teenagers in the, in the audience. I'm also an administrator, current administrator for Luckin ISD. Um, I say that because I was at the high school a few years ago, so I know most of these kiddos, but, um, I'm in a primary, a K through two now, and, um, you would be amazed at what are in backpacks for second graders, or first graders, or kindergartners. We have had second graders bring vapes to school in our backpacks. And you think, oh, it's the ones that have drug addictions. No, it's not. It's the ones that have normal, middle-class, um, lives that are having troubles too. We need to make sure that this, um, ordinance is approved, but it's also, we add things to it and make it stronger for our kiddos. I had something planned, but all of these kids took all the most statistics, so, they're so good at it. Um, but I am impressed that you want to, um, put an ordinance in, in place, but let's be fit up a little bit, and, and see how strong and how the max that we can do for our kiddos. Thank you.
Hello. Um, my name is Kim Simmons, and I'm with the Alcohol and Drug Awareness Council here in Luckin. And, um, I like Lori have some great points that these kiddos have, uh, taken away, so I'll be short today, which will be new for me. Um, thank you, Mayor Hicks, and to the council, because I do think this is very exciting, exciting steps, um, lots of meetings planning and, um, all kinds of time, but it's very exciting when your, your city leaders want to get behind that. One of the things I started thinking about with youth and, and coming and talking about today is the word, um, for me, environments and what we create, because I think that our youth live in a world today where environments are created for them. Some of these they create themselves, like through friendships and church and places that they go. However, there's some that they have to live and exist in because we create those for them, and this is what excites me about this opportunity, and I want to thank you for taking it on. We've heard it over and over again today, let's strengthen, let's add, I think that message is clear, um, that we need to do that. But it is very exciting, some great first steps, and I think we're creating an environment that's going to, um, certainly help protect our youth. Thirty-one years I've been at ADAC, and, um, you know, seen many, like Melanie talked about, many epidemics and things that come through. Never have I seen anything like this, not with our youth, not this quick and not to this level. Um, I don't even know how to begin to pick these boxes up and, and to, to show you. I picked these up today from Luckin High, all of these boxes, um, and they're, Tom's gonna dump them, they're, um, they're full of different vapes, these are from Luckin, um, many of them THC-filled as well. Spoke to the officers today, against, um, all odds of what they have to face and what I, as a parent, would love for them to be working on at that school, is not at all to have to spend their full day orchestrating what they told me about today. Meetings with administration and a principal president where sometimes they have to schedule full mornings and full afternoons because they have so many. Each one of those little devices represents a ton of time, if you can imagine, at our school. And certainly these are from Luckin because they were literally in my car, because I came from there this afternoon, but all of our schools, as you see Central, St. Cyprian's, and all the school, there's no school that's not dealing with this. So it's not to pick on Luckin, I just happened to pick up theirs today. So I, I just want to say thank you, thank you for what you're doing to help protect all of these youth, my youth that's, uh, my child, my own child that's in school, because the environments that they live in, a lot of times, like I said, are ones that we create for them. And we as parents, I've heard this on where's the responsibility fall? Is it the mayor's? Is it yours? Is it mine as a parent? But if you take an average school year, hundred and seventy-something days, eight hours a day- days, eight hours a day, plus extracurricular and things, 1,400 hours, it's over 1,400 hours of unsupervised time where we take our kids and think, did we arm them with the right thing? Did we prepare them in the right way? And I just think the more that we can do to remove some of this so that they're not facing this and skipping bathroom breaks and things while they're just trying to be at school. So anything we can do that would help restrict that, I'm very appreciative of. So thank you. Thank you for hearing all of us. And thank you for us being able to work together and get this process started.
Hello. My name is Millie Darmstetter Hale. And I stand before you today, just, I've been a dental hygienist in the same office in Dallas, Texas for 40 years. And I just want to tell you, I was going to come here and tell you all about the dry mouth and all the things and the cavities and all the things. I'm so moved by all the students here. I really, it really does. It brings me to tears. Because I know Lufkin can do better. I, you know, was raised and reared in a home from a mom and dad that were passionate. I'm so proud to be here and be, just know that I was raised in a home where my parents, somehow my brother and my sister and I, did not fall prey to these things. But I know we can do better. Having an educator as a mom and a dad that stood up for what was right in our city, I stand before you just to know that you can do better. I had the privilege, when my brother mentioned I was going to be in town and he said, "You ought to come speak on all the things about dry mouth and cavities and gum disease and periodontal disease and all the things," I thought, "Oh, I can do that." But as I listened to all these stories, and I took the time over last night to look over every one of your bios, and I had two children that went to A&amp;M, so I know integrity. I know all the mottos of A&amp;M. I saw a lot of your, your things that proclaimed, "I'm deacon of this church. I'm very involved in my church." And guys, we got to do better. One Bible verse that came to mind was Luke 6:39. It says, "Can a blind man lead a blind man? Wouldn't they both fall in a pit?" A student is not above his teacher, but everyone, when fully trained, will be like their teacher. So I'm telling you, the best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago or today. And you guys have the opportunity to do that. I retired from my dental hygiene job. I watched families come through. 10 years ago, I watched my youth that I loved and tried to educate. I didn't just clean teeth and get a paycheck. I invested. They were my family. And so I stand before you today. I pray that I'll have the next 40 years, I've written a curriculum for a biblical discipline class, because we've got to get back to parenting, investing in families. This is the demise of our country. And y'all can be a beacon and rise up and do the right thing for Lufkin. And I am just so proud of all the kids that have stood up and voiced their opinion. Way to go.
Yeah, if you would. Okay, I got to follow in my sister's footsteps, which that's never easy. So I looked at this from a little bit different perspective. I looked at it solely on with Phyllis, Grand George, and, and my volunteer work that I do for ADAC. As she said, every one of y'all that I know that y'all have children, there was no, no question that y'all are very involved parents and wonderful parents for y'all's children. But Kim's math was a little bit, I'll call it girl math. It's really close to about 1,800 hours. Sorry, Kim. About 1,800 hours that even if y'all are the most involved parents, that y'all are separated from y'all's children at school. And these, I'm over here like tearing up because some of these stories were pretty powerful. I just want to go over real quickly why I don't think the ordinance is strong enough. And Kristi and I, she looks at it from one perspective. I look at it from really kind of in the same light of what's going to keep the city out of the courtroom. Look at it from an equalization, look at it from an amortization. And I'll use the analogy of if we were sitting here today and saying assault weapons were bad, and we all agreed that, but we're going to allow Walmart to sell assault weapons. If we're going to say that vape is bad, then we need to take a stance and say, we can't sell it at department stores, grocery stores, convenience stores. It doesn't matter. It's bad. And we're in a reactionary mode right now. We're way behind on doing this. I commend you for, for taking the initiative to do it. But there's so many things that this does not address. And there's things like AP 242 of the Controller's Code allows mobile vending machines. That means that anybody can go and register their car and drive around the city and sell cigarettes out of their car, e-cigarettes. Also, what's coming now is vape vending machines. I know that most of y'all are a lot younger than I am, and y'all probably don't remember where they had cigarettes, at Lufkin Country Club or wherever, where you could go in and just pull the deal and get cigarettes. Well, we're, we're coming back. And that's also coming at us. And so I took this on as her start. I looked at it of what gives problems to the city and what is a proactive way? Because if we're going to do this right now and while we're looking in the rearview mirror and trying to solve the problem, what's coming at us next? The vape vending machines, the mobile, it's there. It's, it's here. It just hadn't made it to Lufkin yet, but it's in Texas. It's approved. And so I made these changes that are all in red line. I corrected the code. I corrected the research and kind of a whereas of why we're doing this. And then I added the definitions that are on the next page. The sensitive area, I think it needs to be defined. It doesn't just need to be talking about a sensitive area. I think it needs to be listed. Of all the things-
Mr. Darmstetter, we're going to get you to wrap it up.
Okay. All the different sensitive areas. And then on the last one, I think the exception, like I said, there shouldn't be an exception. All school, all stores should be on the same level.
All right. Is anyone else wishing to speak on this item this evening? There being no one, we're going to close the public hearing and move to comments from the council.
So I would like to, to add something or to mention it, Kristi, and then have you do all the fabulous lawyer stuff. And I do want to thank you, by the way, for all the research that you did put into this and the steps that we are taking. I appreciate it because I didn't have to be a part of that research, but I trust you and, and everything you've done. So thank you for everything you've done to start this process. I would like to see if we could add, however that works, that the movable places of business, if we could, is there some way to add kiosks, trucks, vans, things like that? Any type of vehicle that's not a fixed address storefront to this? If that's, I don't know how that works. That's why you're the, you're the boss on that.
It's a good question. We already have ordinances that address mobile vendors like that, that sell plants or whatever the, it might be. They must be permitted. They have to have a fixed location with the owner's permission. And in this case, any new mobile vendors would have to be in the light manufacturing and would fall under this ordinance. So they would be prevented from driving around aimlessly selling vapes and e-cigarettes. In regard to the vending machines themselves, there's already a local government code that addresses that and does not allow direct sales of e-cigarettes in a vending machine-type format unless it's a 21 and over establishment. So the state has already handled the vending machine issue that you're mentioning. And I will say, the, this ordinance is the most restrictive that I could make. And trust me when I say that, I work with kids in my teen court and still be upheld on appeal. And there may be other cities, there are not any other cities except one that I know of that has a stricter ordinance than ours, but it has not been tested and upheld or had time to be tested in the courts. And, and I can only represent and recommend to council ordinances that are legal and constitutional. And, and I've done the best job we can at this point. Now, it can always be amended later. If the legislature were to pass, there's a bill pending right now. I would encourage you to write emails to your legislatures on it. It was, I believe, Senate Bill 3. It's now, now Senate Bill 5 banning THC. That would be a great step. And that would encourage us to provide some more restrictions that we might be able to do legally. But at this point, this is the best ordinance that I can write and recommend to council at this time.
I'd just like to amend all the teenagers speaking. There's no way at 16, 18, 20 that I could do that.
You can't do it now, Jimmy.
Let me just say, you know, we have to start somewhere. We're not going to have the perfect bill. But if we go ahead and pass this ordinance, we can always amend and add things to it. And so I think it's going to be a work in progress for everyone, not just for the council, but for you in the audience, legislators, and everyone to make this better and more stricter for everyone. And so I'm, I'm all for it. But I still want to stay legal as well. And so that's my, that's my position on it. I hope we do pass it tonight. And also that, you know, when the times come, we get more information, we can amend and make it stronger.
And I would say, J.D. and Cody aren't here tonight, or I'd put them on the spot because, you know, recently Crime Stoppers opened up tips at the schools. And you can look at the statistics of the amount of tips that we took on over the last few years. In the month that it opened up in the schools, it went from 20 to 45 tips to 300-plus tips. Now, that's not something that we can legislate, but it is an issue that needs to be addressed.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, first, as everyone has already said, I have been just totally amazed by each of you who have spoken. I've actually, I felt like I was in class and I've taken notes on different statements that you all made. But young man, I applaud. I salute your bravery and the honor that you gave to your cousin on today. I, that was just beyond, beyond. However, one common denominator that I continued to hear everyone speak on was the issues in the bathroom. So, Mr. Mayor, I went back, next year will be 40 years I've been out of school. But then I went back to second grade with this bicentennial year of 1976. I remember my outfit. I remember the parade. I remember everything about Slack Elementary School. But as a second grader, I had no problems going to the bathroom. I was safe to go to the bathroom. But to hear what these students have stated to us on today, Kristi, I don't know if it's something that, excuse me, Ms. Clark, I don't know if it's something that could be added or if it's something that has even been addressed. But at our local schools, do they have bathroom monitors? Do they have people present that are supposed to be assisting to monitor this so that our students would feel safe with just going to the bathroom on a bathroom break?
I believe they do. And they also have time limits, if I'm not mistaken.
We have our teacher out here, our administrator out here saying, yes, there's bathroom monitors and time limits and-
Censors.
Vape censors. Thank you. I just wanted that for clarity, Mr. Gee, because I know that's something that is not in our purview that we could actually discuss or have any say-so on, but just a general question. But it appears, as one of the ladies stated, it does take a village and it will definitely take all of us to make this, in the other word, a better situation. Thank you.
I just want to say I appreciate everybody that spoke this evening and what you had to say. I could tell you were all very passionate. And this is a real issue that's facing our community. And it's unfortunate that this was legalized in the first place. And there's other things we could discuss as well. But this seems to have probably the biggest effect on our young people right now. It's definitely a hot-button item. I, after I heard from you guys this evening, and I already felt pretty strongly about it, I would, I'd love to see just like a total ban of this in Lufkin. But the unfortunate fact of the matter is, we'll get sued and we'll have to redo the ordinance. And, you know, this is what happens. There's laws that we can pass and we obviously want to, want to restrict, or we want to approve the most restrictive law that we can. I do have concerns about the existing, the 50%, if you sell over 50% of other products in your store, then this ordinance doesn't pertain to you. I have a lot of concerns with that because I don't, I think what people will do is, if we limit them here, they'll start selling other items. And we'll see stores open up that sell 51% other stuff and vape supply. So do you think there's anything further we could do to address that?
Well, the issue is also tobacco. And so we have to apply these ordinances consistently. And so we are starting with targeting the vape and the vape retail stores. Because you run into like the tobacco, the Brookshire Brothers, which is basically a gas station but also sells tobacco, and I'm sure vape products. But the exception wouldn't apply unless it's less than 50%. So you wouldn't be accepted out if your sales were more than 50%. So what I mean is, if your sales are more than 50% in vapes, then this applies to you for future stores. So it doesn't matter the format of the retail store. If it's a retail store that sells gross receipts of 50% or more in vaping products, you would fall under this new ordinance.
Right.
As far as new stores are-
Right. But I'm looking at it from, from the op, I mean, from, I guess, the reverse of that, that you would sell, it's kind of like a restaurant that sells 51% food, 49% alcohol. There's a license that you can apply for there and make that, make that work for your establishment. So that's my concern is that you, I mean, this could, this could continue to be allowed in retail stores. And there wouldn't be any kind of ordinance in place to prevent more of these from opening up. So I get that we're regulating vape-only stores. But what if like a dollar store opens up and they make a million bucks a year and they sell $499,000 in vapes and 501,000 other products? There's no effect on, on them. If I, if I read that right?
No, I mean, that is true. But their primary business is not vape. And so that's what we're kind of attacking with this ordinance at the beginning, is that their primary business is vape and vape products and vape retail stores, without affecting some of the businesses that are legitimate, like Brookshire Brothers that sells groceries and also has a tobacco barn. So that's why we had to vet it with, with, you know, people that sell just tobacco-only products as well. And so this was the best balance that we came to.
And the vape is tied into the tobacco. So if we, I mean, I'm just spitballing if we were to say like, you know, you, only 10% of your business can be vape. I mean, are we able to restrict it at all and just bring it as low as we can on, on like-
No, not until the state does that.
Okay. That, that was my, I mean-
If the state does that, then yeah, then yes, we can. And yes, we will.
It's just choked off, basically, at some point.
Kristi, the ones that are, that are kind of outlined on the map that are legal and not informing, would there be any kind of restriction we could have to, say, like prevent expansion from one of these existing sites, like square footage that they currently occupy?
That'd be a planning question, as far as that would go, expansion. I really see this ordinance pushing them out to the, as you can see in the, in the map, to those gray and areas. The best way and the best thing that the city has in its arsenal to restrict this. As far as the ones continuing to operate now, if we were to try to push them out to those districts, we would have, the city would have to pay relocation fees and other fees for each of these stores. And so that's why I did not include it in this ordinance. It is cost prohibitive at this time to do so. But as far as, there is no restriction on their expansion. They would still have to be permitted properly and site plans approved by planning and zoning, et cetera. You know, would have to go through that process if they were to make a big expansion of their business, just like any business. We'd have to treat them like any business.
Would a renegotiation of their lease be a new business again, where if their, their lease is out, they have to renew their lease? Does that new lease now push them out? Or are they, since they're already in that building, they're still there until their building, until that business goes away completely?
If it's the same use, then it's the same use. However, if they stop using their business in the same capacity for six months for any reason, whether it be plumbing problems or whatever, you know, code compliance or whatever, then they will- or whatever, you know, code compliance or whatever, then they will fall under a new ordinance, and they will be pushed out to those districts that are located in the map for the ordinance.
And I'm sorry, you had said that six months earlier. I do remember that now. Thank you.
And if I may, Kim, that was actually going to be my next question, because that was a comment that was made, excuse me, instead of six months to 30 days. Does that even seem to be something that could happen?
Well, my concern with that is that our ordinance itself on nonconforming uses provides six months for all businesses in the city of Lufkin. So the way the court would look at it is an arbitrary rule against one particular type of business, and I don't think that would withstand judicial scrutiny to reduce that timeframe at this time. Now, that might change.
Thank you again for your work on this.
Kristi and Kevin, aside from, I'm in favor of this, this proposal. In a separate, separate zoning ordinance, is it feasible to look at, like, the standalone displays that, if we all see like the neon lettering that's a foot tall, and you got a four-by-six sign by the highway or in front of a storefront, is there a way that we could look at more restrictive signage?
Yeah, we're actually working on that as a city for all businesses, not just this particular business, but all businesses. Because frankly, there's too many. There's too many signs, those ones that wave in the wind and everything else. So yes, planning and city administration is looking at that currently to propose a new sign ordinance that applies to all businesses and limits the number of signs as well. In addition to the state restriction that are on particularly to vape shops within 1,000 feet of schools and churches, that's coming down the pipeline. So that's encouraging.
If that worked, that'd be a big help. Thank you, Chris.
Sure.
What is it now currently, the distance from a school or those different areas? Did you say school and a church and 1,000 feet? Is that what alcohol and tobacco, what the distance is there right now?
In our current, in our current smoking ordinance, there isn't any restriction on tobacco shops.
I'm sorry, not tobacco, but alcohol, and there's a 1,000 feet.
It's 800. Well, I believe it's 800. I'm not positive, though.
You know Scott offhand?
300.
300. Yeah, and actually, I did have 300 in this ordinance initially, but due to some citizen input, I increased it to 1,000, which is the most that I've seen.
So Sharon, real quick, step back up just a minute. Just tell us, give us the Reader's Digest version on quick, I mean, you understand the issues that we face here in this ordinance, and the fact that, you know, there's certain things where we can, we just can't do, because, I mean, we want to do it, but it can't be done, and you understand the reasons why. Just real quick, give us just thoughts on anything additionally you'd like to see here?
I mean, I understand that you think that the movable, you know, kiosk trucks, that that's included, I would like to see that specifically lined out. And I do emphasize with the city, you're trying to protect taxpayer dollars by not being dragged into court. I totally get that. But I think it can be improved, so, and it could be added on to, as Mr. Schenkel said, you know, we can come back to it. I think, as Mr. Lowler said, that, you know, looking at, at the restrictions on signs and advertising, that, that needs to be the next big step, is looking at those things, because those restrictions wouldn't just be on vape shops, as Ms. Gohrn said. That would be on all convenience stores. That would, that would really cut down on what we have. And then, depending on what happens in our special session of our legislative body at the state, if Senate Bill 5 does not go through, then you all can take that up as an issue of local prevalence. And I would encourage you to do that if the state does not fall through on that, if you're on that.
Fair enough. Thank you. My thoughts would be, I think we're really close on this, but I think it's also important, and I appreciate Sharon being here and Kim being here, because y'all have worked in these organizations that deal with this for quite a long time. And I don't want to leave someone out. If there's somebody else here that I'm not aware of that works in an organization every day in our community that deals with these type, I mean, with, with this vaping situation, I think you guys are very up to par with the state laws, and you understand what, what parameters we have to work within. And I appreciate you guys have been very gracious to work with us and trying to figure out a good solution. But I, I'd like to see us, I mean, we're definitely, we definitely need to approve this, but I think that we need to study this a little bit further and bring it to another, to another meeting. Those are my thoughts.
Well, I will say, Mayor, there is some urgency with this. Within the last week, we had a new shop open up on Timberland. So that would be my only take, that we can always come back and amend, like Mr. Schenkel mentioned earlier.
Mark, what is your concern? What's the?
I mean, I don't know. I like to roll the dice, and I'm kind of like one of these, let's just go all the way and get sued. But then again, I realize that...
Oh, no.
We don't have to pay the bill, but I'm kind of like, let's just see what happens, you know? And I kind of like the idea, like, let's lead the way. But then again, I'm not an attorney, and I, I don't mean, it's worked so far for me, Jimmy.
Okay. I just like to see us do something, and you're going to nag my motion as opposed to kick the Ken down the road another 30 days or...
No, I know, I get it. I will make the motion that we approve it.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance in its, in its current form?
In, in the form that I proposed with the two changes.
Yes. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion, that motion carries. But let me say this, I know this council very well, and I do really believe that if there's additional things that we can do here, they will be done. But I think that it is, it is important that if what you say is the case, and a vape shop opened up this, what'd you say, this week?
This week. Our city planner informed me.
So we can always change these ordinances and modify them. And thank you all again for being here this evening. We appreciate it very much. And if you need to leave it this time, yeah. All right, item number nine, presentation and public hearing, and to consider a resolution approving the Parks and Trails master plan.
We contracted with Kendal Keast Collaborative to develop the Parks and Trails Master Plan. They've gathered public input through the use of surveys, public listening sessions, onsite meetings at parks, and through a special committee, which included our Parks Board. Some areas of focus of the plan include park safety, park maintenance, replacement of equipment, and trails enhancement. Upon approval of the plan, staff will begin to develop projects that address these priorities. Our Parks and Rec Director, Buddy Timm, is here to present the plan, and most of council has heard some of this in a workshop, but we're providing information and having a public hearing on this.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Buddy Timm, Parks and Rec Director. As Mr. Gee said, we've been working on this since last October with Kendal Keast. And so what I'd like to present today is the results and the recommendations from Kendal Keast for our Parks and Trails master plan. I'm going to try to, well, they're buzzing in me.
There you go.
How we gathered the data, first of all, we, like you said, four listening session, we had an online survey. There was 915 responses, mainly from within the city limits of Lufkin, some ETJs and some outlining community as well, and some, even some outline counties. I think it was like some grandparents that bring their kids into Lufkin, those kind of things in parks. Eight mobile meetings, three special committee meetings, three city staff meetings that we had as well. The data, quickly from the public input, you see safety and maintenance, modernization and inclusivity, connectivity, which is trails, sidewalks between parks, partnerships between some local entities. As an example, I'm already working with LSD for some possible sharing of some facilities and some off-hours and summers and those kind of things. National Recreation Park Association, NRPA, just looking quickly at some standards, we have 21,00, I'm sorry, 2,188 residents per park in Lufkin. The national standard is, for our size, is 2,062, so we're in really good shape there. We manage 7.4 miles of trails. The national median is 10. Those don't count the ones that are within parks, like the trail within Kiwanis, the trail within Jones. So we are a lot closer to that, actually. So we're in pretty good shape on trails, but it is one of the things they recommended as well. The standard is, or say the standard, the national median is 34.2. Full-time employees for cities our size, we have 28. Our operating budget is 2.7, and the annual is, the average is 3.4. Now, on the priorities, I'll real quickly go through, these are like the top 10. The dollars are simply budgeted dollars as we went through the plan. You know, today, this is not an ask, this is not a request for funding, this is simply providing the data. So those dollar amounts are just estimates that, as the plan was formed, so depending on design, those kind of things, and what it would be. But priority one was targeted lighting, and you can see whether that's Azalea Trail lighting, some upgrades at Kipmeconico, Kiwanis Park, Inside the Park, Ellen Trout Trail, Hurdy Park, just some examples. That's kind of the ones they recommended we start with. Number two, disc golf and pickleball court completion, working on, obviously, both those things. It was nice to have pickleball open up a couple weeks ago. Disc golf would be at Morse Frank for a tournament-style course. Upgrade outdated play equipment all across the city. The four that they recommend to start with, you can see there, Ellen Trout, Chambers, Jones, and Kiwanis. Those ranges are strictly based off how we design it, the footprint, the size. Already have playground companies that, when this is approved, that we are ready to go to the design phase, where then I can bring in some actual dollar, you know, amounts of what those would actually cost, you know, in, in starting with those four parks. System-wide restroom renovations, we all know those are needed. The ones they recommend we start with are Jones, Kiwanis, and Chambers. Priority, I think this was number six, is there five, I'm sorry, Azalea Trail enhancement. So whether that is new surfacing, new drainage that we know we need, it needs in a number of places where washouts create. We're working with some groups already to, for some multing volunteer groups that are working this fall, possibly to kind of open up that trail some from the edges of the trail 15 feet or so. But also, could possibly be even some rerouting of that trail, where there are some drainage issues that, that would help us. Splash pad renovations, when you drive by our splash pads, they're one of the most used things in our city, our three splash pads. So those are the recommendations of Chambers and Kiwanis. Jones Park is by far our best splash pad, and we have the pool, so it's not used near as much. The pool is used a whole lot more than that splash pad, and it actually is our best splash pad. The other two parks, those, those budgetary estimates would simply be, when they come in, they're so old, whether we could replace, I mean, I'm sorry, renovate based on how the surface is, or whether it would be a complete replacement on those. Number seven's Kipmeconico Trail, the roadway and sidewalks, mainly some stuff out there, especially on trail. That would be our best opportunity to expand our trail distances, to add more trails there. There are some groups that we're working with that, in-kind support and/or dedicated trail crew, but be able to add some trail distances. Sidewalking around soccer to help, you know, possibly new restrooms out near the soccer facility. Number eight, soccer field renovations, that's mainly the concession stand and restrooms. Number nine, softball, renovate the four northern fields at the top, scoreboards, the restrooms down on the south end. The lighting was included back on the lighting estimates. Skate park expansion, you know, drive by there, it's amazing how many do use that skate park, you know? It's a, is a very used facility. And so where, you know, it's coming in and smoothing the concrete, some things, it's been there long enough now, we need to do some things over there as well, and add a couple features within the existing footprint of that skate park. So those were the top 10 things that were recommended from Kendal Keast. You know, like I said before, you know, we're asking for approval of the plan, not asking for funding. Upon approval, then we can then go into the design phase and be able to provide then some accurate funding, and then re-approach council with the funding needs we would have to accomplish the goals that we want to accomplish across the city.
Very good. Thank you, buddy. Any questions?
Thank you, buddy.
Yeah, thanks so much. Very exciting.
All right, this is a public hearing. If you wish to speak on one side, you're not allowed.
I have to do some very important speaking, and now I'll have my three minutes. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. I want to thank Kevin and Brian and Buddy for their push to get this master plan going, and for council for supporting the funding. My name's Andrew Farbuck, should have said that right off the top. My biggest hope is that we'll be able to see the follow-through. I know we don't pay for plans without a plan to follow-through with it, but it has happened in the past. And as Buddy said, we're not here for funding today, but I do hope that funding does follow-through and we see these improvements. I know some of the improvements have started, like pickleball courts at Chambers and the great work we've seen at Morse Frank. But, you know, sometimes we hear, conversations I've had with city employees years ago about parks and playgrounds, and say, well, it's good enough, nothing's broken on it yet. And I just think, as a city, we can do better than that. Even on page, I think, slide five, we saw those stats of how Lufkin compares to other cities of our size. And yes, we're close to those stats of other cities of our size, but we were worse on every one of those. I mean, we have more residents per park, we have fewer miles of trails, we have fewer full-time employees keeping up our parks, we have a smaller annual budget. So while I understand, again, that we're not far out of maybe, far off the median in those things, I think we can do better as a city. I think we owe it to our kids and our youth to do better. I know Parks and Rec has a hard job. There's a lot of work to keep up, a lot of parks to keep up, and I commend them for their hard work. But I do think that our parks have been ignored for too long. In talking to families with young kids, far too often I hear, actually, we go to Nakadoches, or we go to Die Bowl, or we go to other cities, because their parks have been kept up better, they've been replaced more recently, and we're overdue. We're far overdue on this. And so I know in conversations with many of you that there's support here, y'all are ready for funding, but I just want to speak out. I know we want a healthier, fit community. We want our kids to have those important lessons that they learn on sports, in sports on the field. We want them to be outside more. I get the video games are fun and addictive, but we want our kids to be outside with fresh air and nature, and we have to provide that space as a city for that. So I just want to continue to advocate for parks, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, there being no one, we're going to close the public hearing and move to comments from the council.
I'll make a motion that we approve the plan.
A second.
Mark, I like this plan. I just, as I've said before, I want to make sure that we have the maintenance. If we're going to spend this much money, I want us to maintain those parks like they should be maintained, so.
I think part of that is in the budget, whatever, to have a crew to help maintain.
That's correct.
Well, and I think too, and I want to say, and I think Andrew would agree, yes, I grew up here, I know exactly what you're talking about with the parks, and I think the whole council understands that. Ms. Bonner probably understands that out there when she was on the council. But Buddy has done a wonderful job, and understand he's limited by how much money or resources we give him to work with. But, and I know you didn't, that was not directed at Buddy, but that was decades of issues with these parks that we need to correct now. So Buddy, I want to commend you too, because you've done a great job. And I know you've got some new people that you're working with, and you're working out mowing in the parks and maintenance and all those things. But yes, Jimmy, that's been discussed quite a bit.
I know it. I just want it public.
Right, right. And we want to find the, the funding quickly to, to move forward with this, because it does need to be done. So, all right.
I agree.
Do we have a motion to approve?
We do, in a second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Item number 10, consider the appointment of a commissioner to the City of Lufkin Planning and Zoning Commission.
We have a vacancy on the Planning and Zoning Commission, which requires a poll. We've received two applications, one of those from Ms. Monica Peters-Clark, and the other from Mike Heineman. Their applications and a listing of the current board members has been provided to you for your review. Staff recommends that we fill the vacancy.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Monica Peters-Clark to fill that vacancy.
I'll second that. If that's what we do, is that how we do it? Yeah. Right? Seconded.
So we have a motion and a second.
Then we do a normal staff.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number 11, consider establishing September 9th and September 16, 2025, a city council meeting dates to con- 9th and September 16th, 2025, a city council meeting dates to conduct public hearings, establish a tax rate, and consider approval of the 2025, 2026 fiscal year budget for the City of Lufkin.
So, per state law, council must establish dates for the publication and conducting of public hearings for the purposes of establishing a tax rate and approval of the fiscal year budget 25, 26. Staff recommends city council establish September 9th and September 16th as the city council dates for the publication and conduct of public hearings. Our regular meeting on September 2nd is the day after Labor Day. We requested, that was canceled during the consent agenda, and that's why they got pushed to the 9th.
Very good.
I'll make a motion, please say aye.
My second.
The motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number 12, consider approval of a resolution providing for the calling and ordering of a special election for council member for Ward Number Three to be held on November 4, 2025.
Due to council member Watkins announcing his candidacy for mayor in the May 27 uniform election, he's effectively resigned, and he may continue to serve until his successor is duly elected and sworn in. In accordance with the Texas Election Code, the vacancy must be filled within 120 days, and as a result, the election for Ward Five cannot wait until our May uniform election date. We're proposing to join the county election date of November 4th. The draft election calendar is on the dyes, which I'd like to point out, includes a filing deadline of August 12th. All of this got compressed because we've been waiting on the county to publish dates, and as soon as they did, we got it on the agenda for your approval. Staff recommends approving a resolution providing for the calling of the special election on November 4, 2025, to fill the vacancy, and propose contracting with Angelina County Elections Administrator to conduct the election.
Robert, I thought that he put it on here just so we could have the longest council meeting we've had in the last 10 years.
I didn't judge it.
I make a motion to approve this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number 13, consider approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Angelina County for election services for the November 4, 2025 special call election.
We need a resolution to enter in contracts so we can have an election.
I do appreciate you summarizing this, because some former managers had, it was like a whole page of things we could have summed up, yes, so thank you for that. All right.
Was that a second, Jimmy?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. This evening, we're going to be going into executive session for Texas Local Government Code, Section 551.074, Personnel Matters, Annual Evaluation of our City Manager. So, there is no action item afterwards. You guys are welcome to hang out, we're just going to come back and close out the meeting, so pretty well done this evening. Thank you again for being here.
This is my retirement talk.
All right, the time is 7:57. We're back in session, and we have completed our executive session, and we are now adjourned.